Welcome to the July 30, 2013 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Raymond. We have an agenda ready to go and I think we'll start right now. Get this moving.
Make a motion for the minutes of June 18th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Minutes approved. Public hearing, consideration of approval of annual revised MMA, DHHS, general assistance ordinance, and appendices. And these are in your E-Packet. Appendix A, Appendix A, and appendices B through E. And this is a public hearing. So any discussion on these?
First you have to ask a comment. Close the public hearing.
At this point, we close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we accept the model appendices developed by the MMA and approved by DHHS using the local area survey data.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. Consideration of appointing, or I beg your pardon, new business, consideration and discussion of issuing bonds for capital improvement road construction work approved at 2013 annual town meeting. Richard Rannigan, Senior Vice President, Public Finance, Core Savings Bank. Is he here? Yes. I'm sorry, yes, you are. Of course you're here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Manager. My name is Dick Rannigan. I'm with Core Savings Bank. I am a financial advisor to a number of Maine and New Hampshire municipalities. As the order states, at the most recent town meeting, the voters approved the issuance of up to $2 million of general obligation bonds by the town. This order would enable us to move forward with the issuance of that debt. Project slated to be done next building season. There really are two options before the board. One would be to go ahead and issue the bonds this fall. It's about an eight to 10 week process. Or to wait until the next building season. As noted in my email to the town manager, interest rates are still quite favorable even though with recent Fed action, there has been a little bit movement up in rates. But I'm a believer of the bird in the hand approach. We don't know what the future will bring with interest rates. Much of the material that I now read and discuss with my colleagues is that rates may move up. We've been in a recent, actually the last three or four years, very low interest rate market, be it municipal bonds, mortgages, and so forth, but there has been a movement up. Encouraged the town to approve going ahead with the bond issue this fall. The funds would be banked with the town and then available for expenditure during next building season. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Discussion, questions?
Dick, how long do we have once we get the bond? Is it a three-year window we have to spend the money?
Because it's under $5 million, there aren't arbitrage considerations, there aren't hard and fast rules on spending. But generally speaking, the IRS has looked upon it as that you have to use due diligence to spend the money. And that has translated into generally a three-year period. So if we were to have funds sometime in October, you'd have three years from that point to expend the funds, all except for what is also named a de minimis amount, up to 10% might not be spent during that period of time, and you would not be in violation of any IRS regulations. So it's a three-year window, basically. We need to move forward. The plan would be that the work would be done next year, so within even 12 months it would be all done and spent.
I think when we talked to our Public Works Director, we kind of looked at a two-phase implementation, you know, with building of next year, building season, and then the following season.
Okay.
So...
You would still be fine. In fact, you could go all through three building seasons and not be in any cause for concern.
Okay. Thanks.
You had mentioned the last 10%. Would we need to benchmark exactly where it's going to go if we don't use all of it? Say, we left 10% left in there, or something to that effect? Would it need to be shown or benchmarked that it would be used for this, this, and this? Or is there any criteria there?
If we got to the point where there was 10% or even more that had not been spent, let's just say that you got very favorable pricing on the project and it came in under and you spent $1,850,000 or whatever that number might be, those monies they could be put into escrow and used to pay down the bonds. So you don't have to spend it all, so to speak. It could also be reallocated to similar projects. Generally, bond council looks at it and say, an extension of what the voters had approved, it could be done if it was in the same area doing the same type of work. The other possibility of if you underspent, would it be come back and ask the voters for reauthorization to spend it on some other type of project? My understanding is that the $2 million will be easily spent in the project.
Mike?
Dick, nice to see you again, by the way. Thanks for answering our questions. You mentioned rates have ticked up a little. What does that mean?
Well, we were looking at a 2% market for a 10-year issue. 2% is probably more like 2.5 to 3 now. So there has been, you know, on a percentage basis, a fairly good-sized jump in rates. But when we look at the last 40 years of rates, 3% is still a very good rate. We were just at a very, very good low point up until really the spring, when rates started to move up in June and July.
Interest, you mentioned in your memo, we're not scheduled to pay interest in this year, this budget year. How would it work that we could issue the bonds and not pay interest until our next budget year, which is basically 11 months from now?
Right. If we were to have, go through the 10-week process and we dated these bonds, say, October 1st, what we would do is we'd have the first interest payment 12 months from then. Typically, you pay interest every six months, but many times we structure it such that we'll have a 12-month first interest payment and then a principal payment as well. So it would be out into FY '15 with the first payment.
Does that discourage people from buying your bonds?
No. It used to be that unless you were lockstep with what was very typical, then you might have some people saying, why are you doing it? It's very commonplace now.
Interest rates are going to continue. Your feeling is that the interest rates are going to continue up? That's what the Wall Street outlook is?
I always get asked, what's your crystal ball show? I don't have one. But I know what they are today. I don't know what they are tomorrow. If we get into the process and there's a spike in rates, we can always pull back and wait and see what might happen. But I'd be a fool if I told you, let's just keep waiting and waiting and they keep going up and they go up. You kind of got to grab what you've got in front of you and go with it. But we'll be watchful if there'd be a spike for some reason that might be short-term. We can kind of time when we go into the market.
What's your advice, Joe? Well, I think we need a motion to allow Don to proceed with the insurance of the bond.
I agree. Yeah.
At a staff level, we like a fall issue and a winter bid package issue. And so we think that's the best timing for getting the most favorable bids for the earliest possible spring start.
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Rannigan and Mr. Willard to begin issuance of bonding up to $2 million for this fall.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Next, item B, consideration of appointing Mark Gendron, which is a familiar name, as MWAAC representative. Is there any discussion on that?
Make a motion to approve Mark Gendron to the MWAAC board.
Second.
Discussion? Just want to make sure that there's nothing that says we have to have a selectman or an appointee. It can't be an appointee.
Can be an appointee, as far as I'm...
Yep.
Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
You should probably now appoint me as alternate, as opposed to the representative member.
Make a motion to appoint Don Willard as alternate to the MWAAC board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
There may be, well, thanks, there may be a few meetings that Mark can't attend, so I could cover those, I guess.
Consideration of auditor engagement letter with Smith &amp; Associates.
When was the last time we went out to bid on it?
It's a long time. It's been, I don't, go ahead.
What does it cost us to be audited? $10,000? $20,000?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can't get that information, though.
Yeah. I just wonder if it's time to go out to bid on this.
Typically, towns do bid on, I would say that it's probably reasonable and prudent to bid on it, maybe a five-year cycle, and we're far beyond that. I would tell you that, you know, it's come up for reconsideration for the last several years as a board discussion, and there's been no decision to bid. I think that it would be in our interest to do so, probably.
Is it too late, though, where, I mean, we're starting audit season now?
It would be too late for this year. But you could bid it for next year. Absolutely.
I just think it's time now to do it.
Why don't we go in that direction?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the auditor engagement letter with the provision that we go out to bid next year sometime in the spring before audit season hits.
Second.
Discussion? Further discussion? All in favor? Consideration of dedication and memorial pages for 2012-13 Annual Town Report, as submitted by Louise Lester, Town Clerk. Do you have that?
See it.
It's in the E-Packet. Well, I have seen it, and as far as I'm concerned, it's fine. Has everybody seen that letter?
Louise did put forward a list of names, folks who are currently still with us and those who've passed away in the last year. There are a lot of good names on the list for recommendation. I don't remember, we had this discussion last year, too, about whether to recognize somebody who's still with us or to continue to recognize someone who's passed on, and I don't think we came up with a rule or a direction. But we do have both options in front of us and some great options.
It's a tough choice.
In other words, it's a tough choice.
Further discussion?
I mean, I kind of like Louise's recommendation because of all the volunteer time that they have put in.
Yeah.
And I know part of the discussion we had last year as well was, you know, to recognize folks while they can still appreciate it as well, and maybe we also have a dedication and we put together a little synopsis of those who have passed away and also include that in the book. And I believe we did that as well last year.
That's what we did last year.
So I would make a motion to dedicate this year's Town Report to Eileen and Howard Stiles.
I second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Next, consideration of quitclaim deeds, as submitted by Deputy Tax Collector Sue Carr, Dana Cobb, Zero Cobb Road, Tina Richardson, and all 38 Main Street.
You gotta do these separately. There's three of them, right?
Yep.
All right, we'll start with Tina M. Richardson, book number 27989, PG, page 162.
Second.
All in favor?
Second one is Tina Richardson and Wesley Richardson. Tina and Wesley Richardson, Raymond and Randall Richardson, map 50, lot 14.
Second.
All in favor?
Third one is Dana G. Cobb, map 12, lot 64.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you.
I was just going to go backwards for a second. The number was 8,000 on the, I looked that up on the audit.
On the audit?
Yeah. So that's not a terrible bad number, but I still think it's good to bid it.
Yeah. Taxicure property update, submitted by Sue Carr.
You can skip through that if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So as you saw in your packet, there is a new list of tax required properties. They're broken down into two sections. The top section are individuals that have current payment plans and are banking good on them. You also see a note on the side that says, we'll be going up. That's because Sue has sent out letters basically stating that they need to go up in their prices to make them more realistic and paid off in accordance with our tax required policy. The bottom are no payment arrangement plans, and she said that any of the ones that are under $1,000, they kind of, even though they don't have payment arrangements, they come in regularly and pay them off. You see there's one for like $258, $599, and $827. She says that they'll probably be paid off over the next couple of months. But then all the other ones, especially the $18,000 one, no work is being done to those ones. And then there are five properties that the town has already acquired, two of which have interests for people wanting to purchase them, and we need kind of guidance on those as well. One of them, the Conservation Commission was interested in acquiring it, but the selectmen asked that we get a legal review of it to find out about an issue of right-of-way because the town wanted to limit the right-of-way, but then the event that they sold it, they wanted to reinstate it. The attorney said that that's a very peculiar situation, so they're having to actually do a full-on deed research to kind of find out what the actual covenants for these right-of-ways. Because if you look at the plans, it's literally Haskell Avenue is just this plot plan, a tiny little lot laid out with right-of-ways that are sprinkled all the way through it, and the deed never references them, says what, you know, what the restrictions are, how it's to be used. So the attorney understands that the town's hesitation on allowing something like that to become just full-on public access, but never flip-flopping it, so, you know. So I leave it up to the board's discretion.
Great. These ones are no payment plans, the seven of them?
Mm-hmm.
Have they been sent letters and all?
Absolutely. She just sent out a round of 30-day notices again. I believe that was sent out last month, and then it's basically a waiting game from there, so.
How long, how much in the rears on it? How many years?
Um, yeah.
The...
That's three.
Yeah, the lower list, Joe, that you're speaking of, those are all, you know, the oldest one is 1011. And so, you know, three years, you know? I think those should be pushed to the next step of our policy and, you know, just move it along in the manner we've done. I'm almost more concerned with the list above that has the payment plans.
Yeah, some of those payments are pretty low for the amount of...
They got to be going backwards. They're not even, the payments aren't even equal to one year of taxes if they make it every month, so they're going backwards in a lot of those cases. I don't know if we should talk about a payment plan that recognizes X percent paid off per year or something.
Didn't we have that discussion that, you know, it was like a two-year payback?
Right now, the policy's five.
Five-year, but these are not even close.
They're not going to make it in five years.
No, absolutely not. And that's what...
They're going to owe us more in five years.
Peterson, as you can see, she was one of the ones that was higher up there, and you can see that she's going to be paid off, and she has $247 left. And that's because we started those new land contracts where we're getting them paid off in 12 months. So, and they have to make the payment towards the land contract on top of their taxes at the same time. So as the new taxes are committed, they need to make those payments on top of the land contract. And if they miss either, it puts it back into the town's court, like ball court, to kind of like figure out what to do with them, so.
We've got some of these from '07, '08 that are hanging on, right?
But you look at these, and I guess Mike, and I've been questioning just on this whole process, is at least they're making a payment. I think the frustrating part, too, is seeing the ones down below the last couple of years, that there's no effort at all to make any kind of payment.
Well, I think when you send them the final notice letter, they tend to wake up at that point.
Yeah, that's what happened. Do you remember that list from last year? We had like eight properties, and all those quitclaim deeds you guys have been doing the past few months, those are all because of those, we finally sent them termination and eviction notices, and that straightened it right up.
Yep.
So what do you do with the top ones then, with the payments?
I think from my standpoint, we need to convert everybody on the top of this list to the five-year payback.
So would you, so would you say if their taxes are $4,000 for one year and they owe $3,000, so you would divide, you know, you'd take the $4,000 and say, okay, it's...
Every year.
Every year, your payments, your 12 payments need to be at least the $4,000 plus the...
Payoff for five years.
Plus 60, you know, divide the $3,000 that they owe from prior...
Correct.
Divide that by 60, which would be your five years.
Correct.
And then that would be your payment.
Yes.
So it's pretty much a formula, and it's set.
It's set. And I think that, it sounds like, Danielle, some of these people are on the old payment plan, they've just never been updated.
Because the town's attorney's advice was if you see them going to be paid off within the next two years, just kind of leave them alone, let them be. But some of these bigger ones, because they're waterfront property, they accumulated almost like $20,000, $20,000 to $30,000 every tax season. So it's, they make some progress, but at the same time...
These are monthly payments we're talking about.
Exactly. We're not talking about annual payments. These are monthly payments, but then every time the new taxes are committed, they're, it's back in the hole.
Can we change that then? I mean, can we change it to like a five-year plan?
It is a five-year...
Notice, I mean...
It's already used.
We'd have to update, we'd have to update it...
Right, that's what I'm sorry.
Because they're so old.
Right.
The five-year plan...
Bring the ones that are in the previous plan up.
Up.
Are they grandfathered, though? Or can we, we can change that?
We can.
Yes.
Yeah. You can do whatever you wish.
That's what he just, that's what he just said.
Put something in the form of, I mean, when you have some $30,000 in the rears and paying $200 a month, 10 years doesn't pay that one off.
Yeah. It's just kind of like hanging, I think, just saying, all right, we're making effort, but...
Yeah, they're taking advantage of that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I would make a motion that the first part of this list be informed that they will need to comply with a five-year payment plan, as currently outlined in our policy.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
So now we, so we've taken care of the first two now?
Yep. Now you got to...
So now we're going to talk about the ones we already own. Danielle has outlined that the lawyers are still doing research.
On that one Haskell Ave property?
On the Haskell Ave property. This is the one that the Conservation Committee feels is a strong parcel. I don't know. Their idea is conserve it so it's not, it's so dense down there, they want to conserve it as open space, basically.
Right.
I don't think it's a bad thing to conserve it as open space and take the right-of-way language out of the deed as part of our thing and just leave it as open space with no right-of-way going forward, if that's the intent of that. You know, you drive down there and it's, you can almost reach out your window and touch your neighbor already if there are right-of-ways going through those pathways. It wouldn't be a bad thing to have a lot be just water absorbing and not become a parking lot in future years and not become anything more than just woods. It's a non-buildable lot to start with, I believe.
Yes, I was on a walking tour to that lot, and it is considered non-buildable, at least in my opinion. So Mike, what would you do in terms of a...
I'm just throwing it out there that I don't know that the lawyers, you know, if the lawyers need to go back and do all that research, how many hours and how messy is that going to be? And I don't think you're going to get your answer question based on my experience with doing title work. You'd have to go through a couple of generations of non-contesting to make it real, or you'd have to get everybody who owns down there to sign off on that fact.
There's a lot of people in that little area.
And so...
So you got to own this piece of property, the town's got to own a piece of property that no one can really get to because there's no right-of-way to it.
No, the right-of-way is from the property to the water, not from, not to get to the property. The issue that we're, the property currently has a right-of-way across the road to the water.
Okay.
To have access to the water. If we keep it and use it as town-owned property, then all the citizens have the right to use the right-of-way.
Right.
They don't have to ever go onto the land, they can just use the right-of-way. But if the Conservation Committee had their way, they want to keep the land, just to keep some wild land down near the lake and not have more development down there in an area that's already, you know, you could never do that today.
It's one of those pieces of property that nobody would ever find.
Right. And from, as a, you know, we could probably make some money and sell it. We're not going to make a lot of money on it. It's not a, you know, the assessed value's $80,000 and probably can't build a house on it based on the grounds that are there, so.
I mean, one of the neighbors may want to buy it just to make sure that nobody ever builds on it, if, at all.
I think we have that in the other Haskell and Boulder and Bond. I, you know, I think the one the Conservation Commission Committee has asked us, if I had, if I was choosing, I would keep the one the Conservation Committee has shown interest in, take away the right-of-way officially, do the water. Town owns it, it becomes basically a very small Morgan Meadow, you know, going forward. It is a great place for drainage, a great place that'll never be developed, and then we put the other ones up for sale on a bid. We know we have interest in some of them, so. We know we have interest in some of them, so.
So the highlight, keep the other three, so...
No, Haskell Ave, which, I don't, I don't remember, I think it's the first one.
I think it's thirty fifteen, or fifteen thirty.
The reason you would extinguish the public's rights is that you think that people would become aware of that access and then possibly want to utilize it, is that what you think?
Yes.
And you, and that would be a bad thing?
Given that neighborhood, yes.
Not knowing what the future holds, just the point, the point I would make, if, if the lot had any extraordinary rights, extinguishing them, not knowing what the future would hold, and I'm not saying you ever would get another parcel down there, but let's say someday you did, or, you know, that, that's the only concern I would have about it. I would certainly promote it or advertise it or encourage people to use it, but I always worry about, you know, the idea of extinguishing any kind of rights associated with any town real estate, because you don't know what the future holds. But I see your point, I guess.
Have you seen the right-of-way they're talking about to the water?
I do not know which one it is. I've been down there, but I don't know which one it is. I didn't go down on the tour, so...
I'm fairly sure that that right-of-way is very narrow between two properties.
It's basically a walk-in...
It's the one I'm, yeah, it's a walk-down, and then when you get down there, there's no dock, there's no nothing, yeah.
I, I understand your point about access, Don, and...
They're not making much access to the water, it's a very precious and limited commodity, and they're not making a lot of public access anymore.
But, see, on Crescent Lake, though, you had the boat lot in Charré.
Oh, I know, I know.
And our beach.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that when you, when you have, I, I get, I get the point, and I understand why you do it, I'm just trying to advocate for the idea of, you know, that it's very, very difficult, impossible these days for the public to get any kind of an access point.
But, but it's not like they don't have access, that's the whole thing.
On that body of water, that's...
On that body of water, where this lot is located, there is access. So why would you have two points of access?
Because you don't, because the only reason would be if you did, if something in the future happened, it might have value, that's the only reason you would do it. It makes no sense today, I agree with that. And I don't know if anything in that, in that built-up area would be happening in the future that would be, yeah.
I think there are problems with public access there, too. It's very narrow down there.
And where are you gonna park?
Where are you gonna park? And I think there are issues like that.
We're open to those issues right now because we own it.
Right.
We already own it.
Right.
So, you know, people could go down and claim, all right, I'm, I'm using this, and, you know, yes, you got the parking issues, but, but it's, the, I don't think the Conservation Committee wants it for access, I think they want it for protection.
Yes, for protection, yeah. So these notes that we're seeing here about recommending for sale and all that, are those from staff, are those the staff notes?
The, we put it to the Conservation Commission for recommendation, and so they're recommending retention, and Mike's absolutely correct in his view of what the Conservation Commission would like to accomplish, and so if you followed his suggestion, that would accomplish what they want to do. The, as far as the other ones, I mean, it, it's up to you, but absent any Conservation Commission interest, the next step is sale.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you read the notes out loud, you know, based on the other information column, most of this lot we're talking about is in a resource protection zone already, which, you know, tells me that it's wet to begin with, and then, you know, under staff notes, it does have access by the right-of-way, and has building impediments, but possible parking development. And I remember when we had the discussion the first time, the only thought of parking would have been gravel, so that it was still permeable, and because there were water issues on the site, so I don't know, I mean, it, it's not buildable, and town's not gonna build parking down there, I suppose a neighbor could buy it for, for extra parking, but, but I, I, I'd, I'd like to respect the request, I think, in this case, of the Conservation Committee. I think that's what we asked them for, and I put a reasonable argument forward, and then we can sell the other, other four properties.
And it would be a relatively easy thing for the attorney, I think, to extinguish the right-of-way.
You gonna make a motion on that effect, Mike?
All right, I'm gonna start with the sale motion, I'll make two, two different motions, if that's all right. I'd like to make a motion to sell tax-acquired properties CO three one zero R, CO two two five zero R, CO two six O R, and HO four eight five R through a sealed bid process.
Second.
Move to second, and any further discussion? All in favor? Next.
I'd like to make a motion that the town hold on to account number CO two eight O R and ask that the deed be updated to remove the right-of-way to Crescent Lake.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Next item, discussion of the effect of approved state budget and municipal budget.
We're looking at the potential of a shortfall of seventy-seven thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars as a, on account of the approved state budget. We had budgeted a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, we're now looking, this, for revenue sharing, we're now looking at revenue sharing at a hundred and seventeen thousand five thirty. I'm optimistic, though, I'm bullish on the accounts receivable, particularly excise taxes, general collections. My recommendation would be to roll forward and monitor this, and only take action if we need to before the end of the fiscal year. I think we may be okay, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I, I, I think excise taxes are gonna spike, and they have been going up.
They've been, we've been doing real well.
And I, I wouldn't worry too much about this right now. I think you need to look at it in the spring and see where we're at.
Right, and, and at that time, there are ways to, to make, you know, an adjusting entry to account for this, but I'm, I'm feeling good about where we're headed with the general economy and the, the town collections.
Could I make a motion that we review this in January of two thousand fourteen at the Select Board meeting?
Right.
Second.
Just so we know of a date certain that we're gonna look at this again?
Yeah. All in favor? Good motion, good idea. Next is Executive Session regarding land acquisition discussion with, with Fire Chief, but do we want to do, do you think, public comment now?
I don't believe so.
And then public, or then Executive Session to follow? So we will switch those two and move into Executive Session now, if anyone wants to speak on any...
Public comment.
Or a public comment, anyone wishes to speak? Yes, I see a hand, oh yes, I see a face now. May I remind you, I, I think I have an idea of what you're going to speak about, and I just want to again remind you that this is an issue that is not a Select Board issue at this point, it's still, as you well know, a planning board issue.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Barb Lovell, I live at seventy-seven Wild Acres Road, and I thank you for the time, Select Board, Mr. Willard, and I would like to mention that, as stated in earlier communications with both town boards, we believe Fry Island's primary objective in the park ride Ring Road is to transfer their parking and town's operational land use needs to the Cape. This objective is separate and distinct from the alleged safety issue they've put forth to us. The proposed park and ride is absolutely not necessary to solve the purported queue safety problem, which has been grossly exaggerated by Fry Island. To date, there have been no reported accidents caused by the current queue setup. Some planning board members, as well as the town planner, have already raised serious concerns about the adverse safety problems inherent in the proposed plan. Raymond's own code officer plainly stated at the last planning, planning board meeting that he believed the current plan requiring multiple crossings of pedestrians, vehicles, and gear would produce significant safety hazards and would be less safe than the situation today. Consider this, Raymond has no police force. We ask you, the selectmen, to initiate an action to have our town planner, Mr. Seymour, prepare a concept plan that would keep the queue lines safely on the west side of the Cape Road, and that you request the planning board not approve the, this step until there is a review of alternative possibilities, and there has been none thus far. We don't feel that this would create an issue or an obstacle for the planning board in their current review, and it has even been suggested by one of their members that we have a discussion, or Raymond have a discussion with Fry Island considering alternative concepts. We produced our own queue configurations, configurations, which would keep safety queuing lines on the west side of the Cape Road, and would easily accommodate the thirty-four-car queue capacity identified in the traffic assessment study made by Fry Island, by their, made for Fry Island by their consultant in November two thousand and twelve, which was then included in their submission to us at the February Planning Board meeting two thousand We would be happy to share any of our ideas and suggestions with any and all. It is our hope that you will support the over two hundred Cape property owners' residents who see Fry Island project as a wholly self-serving, unnecessary, and dangerous intrusion of another municipality on the Cape. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, my name is John E. Walt. I've been coming up to Raymond Cape, my address is one twenty-one Wild Acres, for twenty-eight years. Over the time, I've, that time, I've seen my property taxes increase from four hundred dollars a year to over four thousand dollars a year, but that seems to be the way things happen here on the Cape, but, but I still enjoy coming back, and I'd like to continue to be able to do that. As the planning board reviews an application to create a park and ride facility on Raymond Cape, I am concerned that the board appears to be focused on details of traffic flow and stormwater runoff before considering whether the current and/or future uses of the property are appropriate for the zoning district, or that the use complies with the intent of the land use ordinances and the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, the primary goal of land use is to maintain the rural character of Raymond. The shoreland zoning provisions clearly state it is the intent of these ordinances, provisions, to promote land use conformities. Residents and property owners do not understand why town officials and the planning board are failing to act to protect and preserve Raymond Cape's shoreland residential areas when threatened by development that will permanently change the rural residential character of the neighborhood. Because the application proposes to develop a park and ride facility on twenty-six acres of land, spread across two properties and a town road, its approval would set a dangerous precedent by creating a de facto commercial industrial zone on the shores of Sebago Lake in the middle of a shoreland limited residential recreational zone. Once this Trojan horse is approved, it will be more difficult to justify denying later applications to expand the parking lot size or build storage facilities, or possibly a waste transfer station for the convenience of Fry Island, which provides no benefits for Raymond residents, only problems. I am also concerned that the planning board is not using all available information to determine the credibility of the representations made in plans submitted by Fry Island representatives. Just for example, the plan drawings submitted are clearly labeled Phase One, and they show forty-three space lighted parking lot with three access roads. Drawings of the completed project, which were shown only briefly at the July two thousand twelve Planning Board meeting, include expanding parking to two hundred vehicles, parking for fifty golf carts, and a building. These plans are currently posted on the Fry Island website, and also may be seen on YouTube in a video presentation for federal funding. I see most of you have laptops there, go to YouTube and, and do a search on Pingree, Fry Island, and you have a nice little two-minute overview by Fry Island's, Fry Island's Transportation Committee Chairman describing the project. However, these documents were omitted in the package submitted in the application, so the planning board has been told they cannot consider this information. Why was this information omitted? Second example, the traffic study that was submitted that Barb mentioned provides no information concerning demand for parking spaces as the number of houses on the island increases by fifty percent in future years. Based on information the Fry Island, Fry Island's town manager told town residents in two thousand and thirteen letter, and performing a few simple calculations, even a two-hundred-car parking lot will not be sufficient to satisfy, to satisfy future parking demands. Why was this information not provided? Two years ago, there was parking on both sides of the ferry landing road. Last year, parking on one side was eliminated when big boulders were placed on one shoulder. This year, the big boulders have been replaced by smaller rocks and mulch. Could it be that forcing more cars to park on Cape Road would give the impression that more off-island parking is needed? Finally, Fry Island town officials are now referring to the park and ride facility as the Ring Road Project. They use that terminology in their weekly newsletters posted on the town website and in executive committee meetings. Is the name change an attempt to minimize the scope of the project or to mislead Ice Island residents? We don't know. With this number of omissions and misrepresentations made by Fry Island officials, how can the Plan, Planning Board believe that the application submitted is complete or accurate? Yet they ignore seeing or listening to what Raymond residents and property owners are telling them about the new safety hazards created and the potential for destroying the rural character of Raymond Cape. Selectmen should be aware, the planning board may be exceeding its authority by approving a de facto twenty-six-acre industrial district in a shoreland zone, since town meeting approval is required to establish new zoning districts. The residential character of shoreland zone neighborhoods will be degraded or destroyed if large parking facilities are permitted to be built in the middle of residential areas. Property values, read tax revenues, from residential properties near large parking facilities will decrease as these parking lots are built and expanded. Raymond taxpayers will end up paying more to improve town roads leading to these large parking facilities in order to handle increased traffic and to provide adequate safeguards for drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists using these roads. The alternative is greater risk of accidents and injuries to Raymond residents and visitors. The town spent twenty-eight hundred dollars in attorney fees and legal expenses last year to oppose a motion brought by its own citizens to fix the town... year to oppose a motion brought by its own citizens to fix the town's zoning ordinances. How many additional tax dollars are the selectmen willing to continue spending to oppose the interests of its residents and taxpayers in favor of another town? The proposed plan will create traffic enforcement issues. Since Raymond has no police force, the application proposes using rent-a-cops for traffic control, but, and I quote, "reserves the right to use Fry Island police officers." Does the town of Raymond want to give Fry Island police officers the authority to enforce traffic laws and issue tickets for violations in Raymond? I don't know. If Fry Island still considers ferry traffic backups on Cape Road to be a serious safety issue, then the selectmen should take action to address it, to avoid a negligence lawsuit if an accident were to occur later. A first step would be to direct the town planner to prepare concept plans for widening Cape Road to provide a ferry waiting lane on the west side of Cape Road, beginning at the ferry landing and continuing beyond Sebago Road. Detailed engineering plans and construct, and construction costs would be paid by Fry Island, since ferry landing traffic may be creating this hazard, or this supposed hazard. Since the selectmen appoint members of the planning board, now maybe be a good time for the selectmen to remind the planning board that their responsibilities include enforcing both the intent of the zoning laws as well as the letter of these laws. Planning board members should be able to demonstrate that their decisions support the land use goals in the comprehensive plan and protect the interests of Raymond residents before the desires of a developer or another town. Many property owners on Raymond Cape, whether summer or year-round residents, remain willing to work together with our town officials to ensure that we maintain the rural character of Raymond. Thank you for your consideration and attention to these matters.
Thank you. Any other discussions on that? Now, I, I must tell you that the next discussion will be limited to three minutes, and do not make the same points that have been made twice already by two different speakers.
Hi, my name is Tom McNulty, fifty-four Whitemore Cove Road, um, on Raymond Cape. Um, I'll keep it very, very short. Fry Island has two ferry boats. They only use them, both of them at the same time, um, when they have holidays and, and whatnot. So, let's put those two boats to work and get the traffic down.
Thank you. One more speaker, and... Again, sir. I appreciate it.
And, um, I don't have any much, I don't have any prepared remarks. My name is Tom E. Wig. I'm from three oh eight Cape Road. For me, it's a scorecard, and, uh, and if you take a look and you put a T, T-section together and you say pluses and minuses, and you say, "What are the minuses for Raymond for this project?", which you, I'm not going to go into the details of the project because you all know it. What are the minuses? I could fill the whole side of the page. If I look at the pluses, I can't think of one. So, I ask myself, the people of Raymond elect the selectmen. The selectmen is supposed to be there to protect the interests of the people of Raymond. The selectmen elect the planning board and tell the planning board, "Please protect the interests of Raymond." How is any of this protecting the interests of Raymond? I don't get it. I just, I just don't, simply don't get it. And if you, as a selectman, if you were to take and do it yourself and say, "What are the minuses for Raymond?", and, "What are the pluses for Raymond?", you'd come to the same conclusion. There are no pluses. So, why are we doing this? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is... More public comment? Three minutes?
Uh, good evening. Charles Levitt, fourteen Levitt Road. First off, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, and the board for, uh, not acknowledging my four years of, uh, recent public service to the town of Raymond. I saw what happened to, uh, uh, Public Works Director Nate White at the last meeting, and I'm, I'm sure I wanted to be spared that embarrassment. Uh, I'd like to read a statement. "As our citizens look to our future, we know that change is one certainty, just as has it been for generations before us. Studying and anticipating change through a process of comprehensive planning can enable us to help determine our future. Throughout this process, our primary responsibility should be to our residents and existing stakeholders, as well as to the generations that will follow in their footsteps, just as previous generations have preserved the quality of life for us. The cornerstone of this foundation that we have inherited and upon which our future will be built is human respect. Every inhabitant of the town of Raymond deserves and should be afforded privacy, the right to peace and well-being, security, education, an unspoiled environment, public safety, and guaranteed democratic freedom, which is the freedom to live freely so long as it does not diminish the quality of life for our neighbors." That's a paragraph I wrote for the two thousand and four Comprehensive Plan Vision Statement, and I wanted to come out here in solidarity and support of the people of Friends of Fry Island, to let you know that there's people in East Raymond, there's other people in this town who believe that this is a bad idea. It was a bad idea when there was a public policy, uh, discussion that took place all the way to a referendum to put a cell phone tower on the top of Raymond Hill. This is as bad, if not worse. This shows a complete disregard for not only the Comprehensive Plan, uh, that was written in two thousand and four, but for the future generations in Raymond. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments closed. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And... Executive session pursuant to, to one MRSA. I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA, subchapter four oh five, six C, a land acquisition discussion with the town manager and the fire chief.
Second.
All in favor? We're in executive session. I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor? We're back in session. Next, for...
I'd like to make a motion that, um, the town manager and public safety continue due diligence on a land purchase and authorize them to spend up to thirty-six thousand dollars out of the Select Board contingency monies for this purchase and due diligence.
Second.
All in favor? Period. Thank you. Town manager report?
I'd like to set the date for the next regular meeting at September tenth, if that works for you all.
September tenth. Works for me. Okay.
That's it.
Fiscal warrants.
Great. Can I talk about the library, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I beg your pardon, yes, of course you can.
Marvel. Um, I got a note from the library, and as the Select Board's rep, I would like to just say that, um, the summer tent book sale will be on Sunday, August eighteenth, and the book sale is, um, a large percentage of the fundraising, the library does, and, and this, um, book sale on August eighteenth from ten to three, um, is, is a large, um, portion of that annual book sale money. Um, so I encourage anybody to go out, great deals on books. Most of the books that are there are fairly new. They've been donated by Raymond citizens, and, uh, all the proceeds go back to the The library will be closed Monday, September second. Seeing we're not meeting until the tenth, I wanted to make sure that got out there because of Labor Day. Um, it will be open on Sunday, September first, however. Um, the summer reading program's going great. Record number of participants this year. There was a lot of outreach done, um, and children and teens are participating, and as of, um, just the end of last week, we have two hundred and fifty participants in the summer reading program.
Wow.
Which is fabulous.
A lot of them, by the way, are from out of town.
Some are folks.
Yep. No, residents of Auburn or places like that.
Residents from out of town. On August fifth, fifth, there's gonna be a soil presentation by 4-H. If it's raining, it'll be, uh, at the Public Safety Building. Thanks for that, chief. Um, and on August twelfth, Lisa Davidson, Youth Service Assistant for the Raymond Village Library, will present a program on straw rockets. Uh, and the Summer Awards Program will wrap up on Monday, August nineteenth, at eleven AM. So, thank you, town, um, thank you, Sam, for giving me a couple minutes to update everybody.
Thank you, Mike. That's very, very interesting. Fiscal warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated seven thirty-two thousand and thirteen for the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Also like to make a motion for treasurer's warrant dated seven thirty-two thousand and thirteen for the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
And lastly, make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated seven thirty-two thousand and thirteen for the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
My God.